About a million dollars difference.
Yeah, I'll have to look again.
About it after the meeting, I was just curious if.
Yeah.
How accurate we could expect that to be.
Let me look at that again, make sure. We about ready, we're there, go. There he is.
Okay, good morning, everybody, if you would please stand with me for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, just as.
Pastor Lake, would you mind having prayer for us this morning?
Lord, thank you for this beautiful morning, thank you for all that you've done for us since the last meeting, pray, Lord, for your continual guidance on us, give us wisdom to discern, Lord, exactly what we should do in our community, and we'll give you all praise and glory and honor in your name, we pray.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, good morning to everybody, and welcome to the Hampshire County Commission We will start with the minutes from our last meeting, which each commissioner has a copy of those in hand, so I would entertain a motion to either approve those as presented or make any corrections needed at this time.
Mr. President, I did see that in the minutes it said that Becky was requesting a paralegal, I think she said assistant, I don't know if that technicality really mattered, whether she hired an actual paralegal with a degree or.
I think her letter said.
Did it, okay, I apologize.
And I think I specified paralegal too, when we was talking, I believe.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, I would second the motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that the minutes from our last meeting be approved as presented, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed.
I guess I did. What was you looking for, who made the motion? Okay, okay, go ahead.
You would have claimed the motion there, Bob?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll just make that clarification, I got a little quick there. Okay, the next thing, we'll move on to the presidents and commissioners' report. I don't have too much to report on this time, did go up to meet with workforce region seven, starting on that committee, used to be Commissioner Cannon's, we did some trading there at the beginning of the year, so I'm just getting started with that, and the quarterly, their quarterly meeting will be in Martinsburg on the 31st, and I plan to attend that as Some follow-up on the questions that the commissioners presented to the school board, did some follow-up with phone calls and emails there, did submit those questions in writing to the clerk, and those have been posted on our website, if you want to look at those, and we also sent those to the Board of Education. To my knowledge, we have not received a response yet, clerk?
No.
Not too much else for me to report on this time, so I will pass the floor on to Commissioner Hott.
Okay, I had a central Hampshire PSD meeting, mostly what was discussed in there and actually taken on was the right of ways for the Purgisville project, and also the right of ways for the Slansville water project to go out to the Slansville school. Tended upon land protection board meeting, and we, the main thing we done there is we went over the policy and procedures for how foreign land, those are contracts and proceeds with doing the easements, that was the only two meetings I had. I did, as Commissioner Egner just spoke of, I did have some phone calls concerning our meeting list on the 28th, most all of them were positive, well, they all were positive as far as the county commission having that on the agenda. One of the things that was disappointing to me, and also some people that I talked to, that the review reporter covered fairly well the first part of the meeting where we had talked to Mr. Morgan, and Mr. Morgan answered some of the questions that we had. However, there was, there was nothing really said about the people that attended and had and expressed their comments and testimony as to their thoughts about the school system and the naming of the schools and the bathrooms and so forth. And that, that bothered me personally a little bit, because those people have contributed to that community out there for, this is probably some of them fourth generation, the Sowers for one, that have contributed to that community. And also, Mr. Leach was here, and the Shingletons, and then Mrs. Piles from the Gust area, and those people are community-minded people, and have made those communities what they are, they've made them attractive, where people want to move here, and they didn't get any coverage at all in the, in the report, so I'm, I was very disappointed about that. Other than that, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Hott, Commissioner Cannon.
Thank you, yeah, I met with several of the department heads that I thought could find some use in Senator Manchin's workshop for earmarking money for 2024, mainly Darren Taylor with the criminal justice board, and Julie Linger from the committee on aging, I worked with both of them, was working with Julie, made on an earmark for another hot cold truck in 2024. Talked to Delegate Thorne and Helen Brand about jail legislation, I'm not sure if you gentlemen saw, but the main, the one of interest to me was the, the one where the lawmakers give the county commissioners the power to charge for reimbursement for our jail bill, which I see in the final version won't allow us to, our county to get any help out of a class four town, but anyways, we also, we, we had a planning workshop in which I met with Mr. Hott, Mr. Hicks, Mr. Oats, and Mr. Ronken, which I think we'll be touching on a little bit later, one of the main questions was about reimbursements, which I'm still awaiting further response, if you will, from the Ethics Commission. Did talk to Commissioner Hott briefly about you can be reimbursed for your, for your mileage, but other than that, I did meet with the superintendent of schools, talking, and Karina Mongol, one of the Board of Education members, to talk about different concerns, and school deputies, and one of the things that I, that I have heard that I don't necessarily agree with, and it's a pretty small group, but there was a few people that said that the commissioners really didn't have a place meeting with the school board, and couldn't find that more ridiculous, and I like to say that publicly, they're, were both county-elected officials, and as we know, in chapter six, you know, all the county-elected officials, including the magistrate court judges, have a duty to the commissioners for their conduct and to prove that they're not neglecting their duty, and it was to my understanding that a lot of citizens that showed up that night were trying to show that the Board of Education's members did neglect their duty, I don't know if I'm necessarily to the full understanding of that at this time, but, you know, we, we put a lot of money towards deputies on the economic development side, we're working with them on a lot of different projects, PSD works with them on water projects, I could go on and on about the relationship and how it's completely warranted to have a business meeting with the school board, and I'm sorry if you disagree with that. I did receive several calls about the Springfield EMS concerns, which I believe we're going to address later. Other than that, we, Ben Fisher from the solar farm reached out to chat, as we know, commissioners are not giving them a tax break, but they just wanted to come in, give us an update, and I believe Amanda is coming in here in a little bit for cell tower permits, so I'm not going to over elaborate. Other than that, everything will be gone over later in the agenda, thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Cannon, I'll just add, I had one other meeting there I didn't have on my list, it was a county committee, we started something new here this, this year, with meeting with the elected officials and department heads that are assigned by the commission, that's just an effort for our inner county workings, you know, between departments, for us to be able to communicate better, and, you know, try to, try to head off problems before they start, or give suggestions to prevent problems in our, our inner workings of the county. I met with the elected officials and the department heads last, late last fall, and we all agreed that that would be worth a try here this year, and so we are meeting quarterly along with a committee for wage board in efforts to, you know, help keep our employees, that's, that's been a struggle, not only for the county, but for the private sector out there as well, so I didn't mention that in my report, wasn't on my list of regular public meetings, but am working with the elected officials and the county department heads to go through some of those concerns. So, thank you, gentlemen, and for your reports, and we will move on to invoices and any non-scheduled business. We have a short agenda today, so clerk has included some, some different things there, kind of not in our normal format, but we will move on, see what he has there for us.
Well, it's all business that you would be addressing anyway, so, yeah, though it's not specifically agenda-stated, in this case, we've got a letter from the region eight, it's actually signed by Adam Carlin, in regard to his accounting, he's offering his accounting services for the CBG grant for the health department, and he gives us rates and so on, Mrs. Curl asked that I bring this to you, and if you wish to continue with it, then we'll get a contract together, they'll get a contract together for you. You seen that? Do you see this? Do we have any other offers? Do we have any other offer?
Any other offers that we know of?
I don't know of anyone else local.
This was some of the region eight requested?
They called and asked who the commission worked with, and I said, well, you know, Phil lives in the past, but Adam Carroll has taken that business, and they referred to.
Who does, who does the building, who does that now, Adam does that too now? Mr. President, I, I move, we honor the request of the region eight to acquire, retain Mr. Adam Carlin to do the accounting for the Health Department CBG grant for the, I think the mobile unit in the climate control room at the Health Department.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that the commission approved the request from region eight for the accounting services of Adam Carlin during the Health Department construction projects. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passed.
We called Mr. Morland, came on behalf of the Library Board regarding some repairs to be done to the Davis House, and they had a bid from JES to do that work, you agreed to pay half of the invoiced amount, Mr. Morland is informing you that they started work yesterday, but they would like to have the check available to pay them at the end of the week when they complete their work, and we would bring that to you, we can have a check wrapped. I think the half is around $1,000.
Were we taking that out of, you know?
No, it's up to you guys, we're going to figure it out.
I move we authorize the clerk to relinquish the check. As presented by the Library Board of Trustees.
Okay, I'll second that, and I'll add, I think we can take it out of the general fund for the time being.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that the commission take from the general fund, calculated at one-half of the expense for the Davis House construction, or, or repairs for the amount here in the letter, $11,745.31, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Assistant Wagner brought us exonerations. First two on there was because the gentleman not being issued a occupancy permit for his building commission, so I'm not exactly sure what the deal is, but the inspector had turned in the final report, so it's exonerating.
Did Mrs. Wagner note that that, that'll be fixed for the upcoming tax?
I think that's the point of the exoneration, she did not say.
Okay.
Mr. President, I move that we authorize the exonerations as presented by the tax assessor.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that the exoneration's presented by the county assessor at this meeting be approved as presented, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Project manager, Hott, has advertised for bids regarding the security system in the judicial center, said we received a bid as advertised, and I want to.
Good morning, Mr. Hott.
It was supposed to be sealed. Sheriff Sands had a grant to upgrade the security system in the judicial center, it was a $25,000 grant, we went out to bid, had a mandatory pre-bid meeting, he contacted four vendors, we only had one vendor to show up, mandatory was advertised in the paper for the two-week specified period, and the one vendor, he showed up, well, the bids were due in Friday at four o'clock, we had a mandatory pre-bid meeting on Monday, the sixth, Metz Electric did show up, recorded where he signed off, he showed, he did show, and he submitted his, his bid in to upgrade the security system, essentially over there when it was built, it's an Ingersoll Rand brand controller and a main control box, and that's proprietary, and they are out of business. So, that's where, so the bulk of this is replacing that control box, so it communicates to the bailiffs, the upstairs, five doors upstairs, they're controlled by a wireless router that speaks to the control box downstairs, and that comes and goes, so part of this, to do this is upgrade the control box so it works, and do hardwire from those four doors down to the control panel, so everything in the system will be hardwired, and we'll use a router for the upstairs.
Okay, thank you for your follow-through on this, Mr. Hott.
You will not cut yourself, you might bruise yourself with that knife, but you will not cut yourself with that knife.
Not real sharp, is it?
No, sir.
Gentlemen, ready for me to go ahead and open?
Yeah.
Oh, there's more than one copy here, I could give each one.
Have we received grant money that's sitting in this?
Clerk, is the, is that grant money within the county on hand yet, or is it a process as we go, as we go through?
I believe it's a process reimbursement, I'm not clear of any of that, that's something that we need to share.
That's, we'd have to talk, check with the sheriff for sure, I believe you get it as you submit it, though.
Okay. I'm, I'm, we have not received. The grant program was a Justice and Community Services Grant Award.
Gentlemen, have any further questions for Mr. Hott?
No, thank you, Mr. Hott. Gentlemen, I, I don't think we have a whole lot of choice, but the sheriff needs to be equipped to do his job in, in carrying out the security of the judicial center, and I think this is very, very important. With that, I would move that we accept the bid as presented by Metz Electric.
I'll second that motion, and we've, we've, we've used them before, and they've done satisfactory, satisfactory work, so I'll second that motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that the access control upgrade for the Hampshire County Judicial, Judicial Center be accepted in the amount of. be accepted in the amount of twenty-four thousand eight hundred dollars for that project. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Motion passed.
Thank you very much.
Anything materialize on this? Can we have these?
I'll just need, I'll just need one copy back. You're more than welcome.
Alright.
I have no idea what it is.
Did you want to sign one?
Yellow. Clerk, would you want us to go ahead and sign one this morning?
Anything materialize on the ambulance building?
We're closing in.
Okay. Thank you. Do you still have that, I think we hired you after we, the original ideas, but do you have that print where the building is there now, there was a partition wall put up? And the building that's there next to nine-one-one center, do you have the print that originally was to retrofit that building? Do you have that print? I found it the other day, just an old one, and I wanted to give it to you, just...
Got two signature lines.
Just in case that's an option or a thought. I don't have it here per se.
Matthew, you want me to sign your copy as well? You want me to sign your copy as well?
I don't have a copy.
Here you go.
I'll have a copy made.
You can keep that one. Did we originally pay for the engineering to make blueprints for that building with the partition wall? Where they, next to the nine-one-one center where they put the ambulances down?
Was there blueprints to build or to call?
What was, what was he talking about?
The artillery building up inside nine-one-one, where they're going to retrofit that for ambulance storage and wall and so on. I don't recall.
I've got a blueprint. Tad gave me, but I didn't know if we had paid for those services or...
I can go back in a minute.
It's no big deal. I just wanted to get Matt a copy in case that ever became an option. He at least has a copy so we don't have to repay for the engineering.
Whatever we have, we'll look at.
It had offices behind that partition wall and, you know, conference room. Just, just a thought. Maybe down the road.
Thank you.
As best I can tell, that's all I have for the unscheduled stuff.
Commissioners, do you have anything for the next few minutes? If not, we may have to recess for twenty minutes or so. I don't, I don't really want to go to the nine fifty. It's a little early to push that, so.
If we get Amanda over here earlier, we could go ahead and do that, if you can get her to call. On personnel, as both you gentlemen know, Mrs. Timbrook took a job with the state as a, so we have, we have that position as a grant writer. And we haven't advertised it yet. But Mrs. Timbrook has agreed to do this part-time until we get a grant writer. And she's also, she wanted to try to finish the ARP funding that we have. So I'd like to go ahead and make sure that we keep her on as a part-time employee. And of course, we won't have to pay no insurance or anything, but we have to still have to pay, we still have to pay our FICA and federal taxes and social security. So I just, and if you gentlemen are agreeable with that, that'd be a motion that I make. Because I think we still need somebody to be, we haven't advertised yet. I think we still need somebody to be doing that. And I think she would be good, she's agreed to do that. And she would be good to maybe train someone else as we, if we bring someone else, someone else in.
I would agree. Are we at the point where we're ready to advertise to replace that full-time position? Or we need a little more time to look at that?
Well, I, personally, I would like for us to discuss this more as to how we want to... I'm not sure that that position would be something that we want to advertise as full-time. I think maybe there's some possibilities that we could combine that service with something else. And I think that's something we have to discuss and see what, see what we want to do there.
Yeah, my only, a goal aside from what you just stated there, Commissioner, would be that we do it fairly quickly so that we can take advantage of Mrs. Timbrook's training, you know. So we could have that person here for training too. But yes, I would agree on Commissioner Hot's motion to continue to keep Ms. Timbrook on part-time. The grants have certainly been a big factor in the county here in the last five or six years. And we need to continue that effort of bringing our federal and state tax dollars back to Hampshire County. So I was glad when we made that more aggressive effort for that, and I think we should continue it. So I hear a second on that?
Yeah, I would second the motion to hire Erin Timbrook a part-time grant administrator.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we offer Ms. Timbrook part-time work as she has resigned her full-time position as a grant writer. But to keep her working for the county and following through with the current grants that the county's working on. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Anything else, gentlemen?
We need action on the invoices, I think.
Oh, yeah, we didn't do that.
Do we really want to wait another two weeks to our next meeting to run an ASG for a full-time administrator? Grant administrator?
Well, like Commissioner Hot said, I would agree we ought to look at what other options there are for that person to fill and make sure we state that clearly in the job description. But I would agree, we should probably try to get that done within the next meeting.
Thank you, Pastor. Thank you.
I think before we advertise, though, we ought to be, have a clear definition of the job duties.
Yeah, I got, I got some information here on the grant writer requirements. I don't have anything else other than that right now.
And I think the grant portion of it, gentlemen, we're solid on. It would be the additional administrative duties as to where we need to add clarification for the job. So let's put that on our list to come up with that, hopefully before the next meeting.
On the invoices, did you look at the invoices?
Yeah, well, I've gotten to the second page. Need about a minute.
Okay. Yeah, I really liked, this is really, this is a big improvement. I mean, this is just... See Mr. Thornback, I wonder where he's been? Haven't seen him in a while.
We didn't know you'd come back from Charleston alive or not. Pull your hair out.
Of course, nobody came to help you, did they?
Just led you to the dogs, didn't it? Did you get hold of Amanda or not?
I didn't reach her, but I have her.
Jail bill was on the last one, right? Was it?
I think so, dude.
Thirty-eight thousand.
I remember that number. I do want to thank the clerk's office and Eric, Bethany, and Holly for the update on our invoices. It's much simpler, easier to follow, a definite improvement, as Commissioner Hot stated. So thank you, ladies and gentlemen, there for working on that for us.
All three of you, get to see all the invoices this way.
Hey, Brian. Five thousand dollars, I'm familiar with that.
Yeah, payment for, I think it's monthly. Taking the responsibility of overseeing all the volunteers in our county. Help tools and so forth. We're required by state code to have that.
Is the amount set by lawmakers, or is that negotiable?
It's somewhat negotiable. I think we're at the minimum, though.
Yes, I say, is there a...
Okay, did that flag it up? Time to vote, one more second.
We just don't know the whole system.
Eric, just telling you, it's yours for Judy, Judy, Judy. I guess that was one that they kept submitting that, right, inch or two. I don't know what you wanted to do there. Let it ride. Hold it, one oh three. Mr. President, I'd move that we pay the invoices as presented.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that the invoices be paid as presented. All those invoices are since our last meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. And I see we have Mrs. Barnes here, so we will ask her to come up about the cell tower permit application.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So, this is update microwave tower. We have multiple cell towers.
What was the deal on that Scott Landis occupancy permit?
Um, so Scott Landis occupancy permit, that's from, I think, 2020, prior to me being in the chair. It seems as if something, paperwork was misplaced. And when I went, when I started the process of going through to clean up our permits to close out houses and whatnot, it was caught. So, he states that it was complete, so we pulled all the paperwork to prove that it was complete. I mean, unfortunately, I don't like that it wasn't caught on time, but here we are, picking up the pieces. Making it right.
Mr. President, I move that we...
Wait a minute, let me see. Okay, so, cool, straight.
Seen they were putting one up in Augusta, is that the one?
So, what happened in Augusta, what they reviewed, reported on was not correct. That was just updating antennas. They did not put a new tower up. They did not extend the tower. They literally just updated existing antennas.
I thought that was the case, but I, but anyways.
So, we do have one in work, a new tower in work, but it's not...
Not that far along.
Yeah, by any means, is it ready.
Did that Tom Sirocco from US, did he, did he ever meet with you?
Yeah, that's the one we're working on right now.
He's different.
Very different, and I think that's why the process is lagging on.
Yeah, not, definitely not your fault. But he originally talked about five new towers in the county, and I think it's four now. The one from Romney, they kind of moved a little closer to Springfield. So it's, they changed things a lot on you.
All right, gentlemen, in relation to the presented tower, update tower, microwave tower update, do I hear a motion for that?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve the update tower for microwave type of construction. Contractor Allegheny Industries Incorporated. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Motion passed. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, the only thing I have left I wanted to mention to you regarding the calendar. I had some question whether or not we would need to meet again to make a final approval on the budget. However, the calendar says it needs to be submitted approved for submission prior to the twenty ninth. So we meet on the twenty eighth in the evening, and that should be sufficient. After we get all of our budget information together and decision made, for you guys to approve a final levy estimate.
So that'll, that'll give you enough time, even though it's an evening meeting? Eric, all good with that?
If you don't change, I hope by that evening.
Okay.
Well, do you think it'd be, maybe we should meet in between to make sure we...
I don't think so. I think if, I mean, we can, depends on what y'all feel the needs are. But I think if we can come out with some kind of a consensus, we can share with you what we're seeing and how the budget's coming together. And if, and you can have it prior to the meeting to review. We can always, if we have three days, we can advertise for a special and have it. But according to the calendar, this is, this is the same format we generally use. I just wasn't sure with an evening meeting if we'd have enough time to get that done. However, it says before the twenty ninth, so we need the twenty eighth.
Okay.
First note is, okay.
I believe we'll have a better idea when we get done today with our raw numbers. Just how much discrepancy there is, how much extra work we may need to do, and we can go from there. But I believe we'll be happy.
Okay, then. That would conclude our regular business. You gentlemen want to close the commission meeting and start the budget workshop at this time? Is that how you gentlemen would want to proceed on the budget agenda?
You gonna do public forum, Mr. President? See if Mr. Thorne has anything to?
All right. Yeah, I'm sorry, Mr. Thorne, did you have anything to report on from your trip to Charleston?
No, I'm sorry.
Okay. I do appreciate his continuing, keeping the commissioners informed and called me, called or texted me several times while he was down there. And I appreciate being in the loop there. So thank you for that effort. And we don't have any other public comments, so that's part of the reason I skipped over that there, Commissioner, but I'm glad you pointed out.
He's hot back there. I don't have any objections, Mr. President.
Mr. President, I move we adjourn.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that the commission adjourn the regular scheduled meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Meeting adjourned.